We're going to call the meetings order at 5:30 and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a moment of silent meditation. All right, can I get a motion for an approval of the October 27th agenda and the minutes from the September 22nd and October 6th school board meetings?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to celebrating success, we'll start with Mr. Hall and the elementary.
Hello, everybody. I have fourth grade and fifth grade here this evening. We'll start with fourth grade. We have the highlighted students of the month, which was the big three. The big three were treat others right, make smart decisions, and maximize your potential. For fourth grade, we had Corbella Keeling, which is here, and Elsa Madison Howe. I will let both teachers stand up and tell you why those two students were picked.
Come on up here, Bella.
Right.
Oh, you got her again, Bella. Over on the beautiful side.
Yeah, you have to come up here too, sorry. You don't get off that easy.
All right, ready?
Okay.
All right, so I picked Bella Keeling. As you said, our September, it was August, August.
August, yeah.
It was August, was the big three. And so Bella is a great addition to my classroom right now. It's not always the easiest classroom to be in, but she is always willing to work hard and do everything I want. And so like you said, it is treat others right, make smart decisions, and maximize your potential. And so she has, she's always been kind, respectful, and willing to help. And that's whether it's supporting a classmate with her math work, or listening to someone else's concerns, or respecting her personal space, which isn't always the case in my fourth grade room right now. But one of the things that I really stood out to me when I was to pick my student that week, there is one of our students that he doesn't always get picked to be partners with everybody. And she willingly, right away, was like, oh, yeah, I'll be your partner, and really, really helped him. It was great to see, like, she understands the concepts for working enough that she was able to help the student do quite a bit. I think Bella is one of my students that I probably could pick every single month for the student of the month because she is just making my class a little easier for me sometimes. So, thank you, Bella, for doing that for me.
My student was Elsa Madison Howe, and she wasn't able to be here tonight, but I still want to talk about her. She is such a cute little thing. She's got little freckles, and she's such a ray of sunshine. So, I'm just gonna read what I wrote about her anyway. I wrote that I can say that Elsa displays the three qualities of treating others right, making smart decisions, and maximizing her potential. Elsa is kind, she always has a positive attitude, and she's a positive role model. She is an amazingly hard worker, and she has such a brightness about her. She always comes down the hallway every morning and she gives Mrs. Ross, Ross, and myself a smile, and I'm gonna imitate it because it's the cutest thing. She kicks up her legs and she goes, hi! And gives us a little peace sign. She's always bright like that every day. She just has a sparkle about her, and she just makes a smile every morning when she comes in. She doesn't tell others what to do or leave with words. She is a quiet leader. She leads by her example and how she acts and treats others. She is an awesome reader, which as a reading teacher, I love. She asks me every day, Mrs. Stafford, can I take this book home? And on the first day of school, she asked me to take a book home, and I was like, you can take books home, but are you going to bring that back? Are you going to take it? Are you gonna take care of it? Will I get that back? And she said, oh, yes, Mrs. Stafford, I am very responsible with books. I love to read. And she, she has taken, I don't know how many books home. She loves to read, and she is killing her AR goal. She's just excellent at it. So, she has definitely proven to be responsible and so much more. She makes a smile every day. She's a joy to know, and she's a wonderful student and a good friend to all of the classmates. So, we are happy to recognize Elsa, even though she's not here.
The September theme was knowledge, and we're highlighting fifth grade for the month of September. We have fifth grade. Our two students were J.C. Barnett and Aubrey Foster. Both of them unfortunately are between sickness and not being able to be here. But we have both teachers. I will let them stand up proudly and discuss why those two were chosen.
Okay. It was courage, was.
Courage, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just wanna start reading about courage and you guys are like, whoa. Okay, so I chose Aubrey Foster. Aubrey is actually new to our school family, so I thought this was a perfect character trait for her. Because starting in a new school can be tough, but she comes to school each day with a positive attitude and smile. She's had her rough days, don't get me wrong, with the tears, and just missing her friends and teachers from her old school. But after conversations with her, she always dries those tears up, and she is ready to start her day. So, no matter what challenges she's faced, she's always courageous in what she's doing. And her kind, heart, sweet personality really brightens our classroom, and she's been a really fun addition to our school family. So, glad she's here.
I chose Jocelyn Barnett, which she couldn't be here tonight, but when I think of courage and being brave, I think of J.C. In class, she was always willing to be brave by raising her hand to participate in anything that we're doing in class. She's willing, she'll ask questions, she is always willing to be brave and help others when needed. So, she always reaches out if other students need help, and she reaches out and helps them when need be. She stands up for what she feels is right, even though others don't agree with her. So, I really like that about J.C. She always has a positive attitude, she never gets up. She's determined every single day to do her best, and I really truly enjoyed, I had J.C. when she was a second grader, in second grade, and so I really enjoyed seeing her, how much she's grown from second grade to fifth grade. So, it's really neat to see, but she's a very sweet, kind young lady, so.
I have the cross-country team here with Mrs. Mattern, and they're gonna talk about all the wonderful things they have from this season. All right. Let's see. One for one, too.
Okay, to start with, let's say I'm gonna push all the junior high kids in that direction, and I'm gonna put my high school two that I'm recognizing tonight right up here. So, as you can imagine, if you're a cross-country runner, you're probably in some other sports as well, so they just got done with that, and now they're off to swimming and basketball. So, I want to recognize Rocco Felkman and Maddox Rice. They were both all By County runners this season, and Rocco was also a WRC runner this season. So, they have been recognized for that, and we're really proud of the efforts that they have put into the season. If you know anything about cross-country, it's not an easy sport to manage sometimes, and they have to manage that on top of their academics and some type of social life if they have time. So, the other kind of cool thing that happened this weekend, Rocco ran in the Covington Halloween Run and took first place in the 10K. So, I'll move on to the junior high. We have several runners up here tonight, and some, one of the cool things that happens with junior high that's a little different than high school, in track and cross-country, if you meet a qualifying time during the season as an individual, you can go on to the state meet. And they get to run in Terre Haute where they have a nationally acclaimed cross-country course. It's a collegiate course, and really interesting. Now, this year was even more amazing because not only did we have individuals qualify, we had a team qualify. So, when you have five of your top runners meet an individual qualifying team, you get to take your entire.
Cross-country course, it's a collegiate.
Boys team or girls team. And in this case, it was our boys team this year because we had five boys that met the qualifying time, and that was Carter, and Cam, and Jensen, and Brayden, and Jonathan. So, those five were, their score, their teams, times put together allowed us to take the entire team, which was an amazing time for them and quite an experience. Then in addition, we didn't have our whole girls team go, but Evelyn and Eliza both ran a qualifying time to be able to go to the state meet as well and run in the girls, the girls state meet. So, the junior high kind of put it out there with their runs this year and did a really good job. And I, the rest of my team that filled out the boys and girls, for the girls, I had Kate and Quinn Belmo, and I had Izzy Galloway. So, it was really nice to have a complete team. And then for the boys, I'm missing a few tonight. Gibson Sheets is a sixth grader, Abram Pollack is a seventh grader, and.
Levi.
Levi Buckley is an eighth grader. So, they were also part of our team and were unable to make it this evening. So, again, I'm really proud, and I need to mention too that Carter ran in the state meet and medaled an eighth, which if you had to see all the kids running, you would be amazed. It's like 500 kids running in each of the races. So, pretty outstanding that way. And he also ran with Rocco in the Covington Halloween Run and ran a 10K and got third. So, we got first and third, and Dusty, or Lat took second. I didn't even realize that he was a runner. He's a former Attica grad, and he slipped through my fingers somehow. I played tennis, and I never knew, they could have been running with us. I'm a little bit more specific about finding my runners. But anyway, I'll give them a big hand, they've got a trophy.
Where's the background? I always get the trash can. I just thank you all. Thank you. Excuse, thanks, guys.
On the principal's report, we want to go back to you, Mr. Hall?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, we've had a busy handful of weeks here. We have until break and right afterwards. We completed our first round of island checkpoints. DOE's steadily improving that process, and we're glad to have that first one over with. They are giving you some better data, not perfect, but better. So, we're learning from that as well. We've had a handful of field trips. I put fourth and fifth grade on there. We took, I actually went with them. I took fourth and fifth grade to manufacturing week, and the junior high went also. The Greater Lafayette Commerce puts that on, and it's all the manufacturers come together, and they broke it down for elementary. They were able to focus on some robotics, some coding, some robotics, some teamwork. It was a great experience for those two grades to go. I was glad we were invited, glad we went. It was a free experience for us, so we'll continue to do that in next year. You want to add anything? Once you were there. Mrs. Stafford?
About robotics?
No, about the, about the field trip to.
Oh.
The manufacturing.
I'm so sorry.
She was like, I'm reading. She was there with me.
Yes, no, it was very well put together. The kids really enjoyed the stations. They loved operating, getting, it was very hands-on, and they loved getting that experience with, with the different robotics, with, even with like the manufacturing and seeing how, they got to like simulate how different stations were like. One was like making a sandwich, just even games. It was very well put together, very well organized, and the kids really loved it. They were interested and engaged the entire time. They really liked it.
Makes me want to write some grants to get some.
Yeah, it was, it was very well done.
Yeah, it was really cool. Fourth grade went to Connors Prairie. You want to add anything on that?
Oh, I don't know.
They do, they do this.
This is why I want to say our fourth year.
Yeah.
Fourth year going, but one of the fun things that the kids, we let them go on the helium balloon ride. So, it's something that most of the kids would never get to do, so they always kind of hesitate of getting on there, and then they go and really enjoy it. So, but it was a beautiful day, and we had a bajillion chaperones. So, pretty much every parent had their kid. And so, Saff and I were just like, all right, that's great. So, but yeah, they, and they're always really great working with us. It was, there were a lot of schools this year, and I was a little concerned, but I don't think we really had any trouble of them feeling like there wasn't enough for them to do, so.
Thank you. Second grade went to Wolf Park. I believe this was a first for Afton. Mrs. Anderson back there, she did not know she was gonna fit on the spot because I know how much she loves it. There, I had no idea this was on the battleground. There are real wolves there, buffalo, et cetera. If you want to add anything, the kids seemed to have an impressively good time.
They did. They really enjoyed it. Probably the hardest part for us was we had to stay at like a minimum for our volume level. Don't know if you noticed, got wolves or not, but they don't really like loud noises. So, that was a bit of an obstacle for us. But then we were also able to add on Casey Park, the new park in West Lafayette. There were some walking trails, there's new equipment there, big slides. The kids really enjoyed that part of it, so we were able to go get knowledge at the Wolf Park and kind of learn about animal habitats, and then we hopped on the bus, went to a park, got all of our energy out. A lot of them lucked with their parents. We too had a plethora of chaperones, and so the bus ride home was top notch.
Same, same. We had, we brought 13 back home with us.
And honestly, I'm gonna brag on the fourth grade one time.
Yes.
Because Mrs. Stafford, in the four years we have taught together, it was the best bus trip I've ever experienced.
On the way there.
We were very, very concerned taking this class, and I don't know what happened, but they, we thought we probably should go buy lottery tickets. Because it was impressive going all the way to Fisher's. So, yeah.
We had parent-teacher conferences leading up until break on that Tuesday and Wednesday, October 7th and 8th, that went like a well-oiled machine. Elementary is very accustomed to doing that, and that went well. We had grandparents slash VIP day the day before break of that Tuesday. That also went very well. It was a new kind of platform, and I cannot say enough thanks to these ladies in the back, especially Tracy, that, that, yeah. The PTO and especially Tracy stepped up and ran with a lot of ideas that I had threw at them, and a lot of ideas they threw out to me, and it went very well. Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to throw in, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from grandparents who were there, like at the county market when I wasn't expecting it, and grandparents coming up to me and telling me how great it was. So, really, you did a great job. You really did.
I did too. I was throwing Halloween rams out of the table out there the whole time, and so all the grandparents were just, they were so happy. They loved it.
Yeah, I feel like this was a mission that I had, that we had a lot of, we don't like people in our rooms, we don't like this, we want to do something different, so we had to completely change it up, and it went well. We learned a lot of lessons, and we're gonna keep trying. She's on board for next year. She doesn't know, but she is. We will do the Halloween parade, that'll be this Friday at 2 o'clock. Parents are welcome to attend that. They'll come in through the doors. Mrs. Mattern, her crew's gonna help parade everybody through the high school and down to La Torre, make a lap, and then we'll be back. Trick or treat for the whole community will be in the main gym this coming Friday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Jamie Greenberg is kind of organizing that. We have pretty much our whole school signed up on behalf of elementary. I know she said she had 14, 15 tables signed up, so it should be a great evening, especially if it's raining and cold outside. Welcome to the whole community to stop by there. And then just another reminder that we do have the Harlem Wizards coming to town November 25th. It should be a fun-filled event, and once again, my PTO has stepped up. I'm not sure willingly or not, but they have stepped up and really helped me take this on. So, rather applause to them again, but it'll be a fun-filled night, so bring your family and invite friends. Grandparents, this is not an Attica, this is a community event, so anybody and everybody's welcome. I think that's all I have.
All right, well, I'm gonna like ditto a lot of that. So, yes, first round of checkpoints. We knew what we were doing this time. It was, you know, not the pilot anymore, and I feel like we did get better data, enough data that we can go in and assign some interventions in IXL based upon that data, so that's been good. And I want to thank all the teachers that stayed for parent-teacher conferences. We had a fairly decent turnout, since it's something that they haven't done in many years. So, I've had positive feedback from parents that they were allowed to, were able to get in and have those conversations with some of the teachers. Some recent happenings we've had, the Deca competition, we had a couple students who got medals for various events. We did start some clubs during our win time and had a pretty great turnout in many of the rooms. We have some chess players and some kids that just wanted to play board games, which I love because at lunch hall, you don't see them stare at their phones, so that was great. And there were conversations and turn-taking and rules. We had a group that wanted to be creative writers, so mixed working with that group. So, I was just glad to see a variety of kids interested in, in different clubs that they weren't forced to go to, but many of them chose to go, so it was fun. We also have the trick-or-treat night coming up from 6:00 to 7:00, and I know all the kids are already excited and talking about that. We also have the veterans program, which will be on the 11th, and we have the breakfast at 8:00, and everybody else is invited to come in at 9:00.
All right, moving forward, we're moving forward with the business meeting, and you're welcome to stay, but if you wouldn't head out, that's okay too. We're going to move forward with communications from the board. All right, any communications from the board?
I just wanted to piggyback on the grandparents' day. I think I'm the only board member that probably represents a grandparent. You guys, the staff, that was amazing. You really put some thought into that format, and I've heard from so many grandparents how much easier that was, and kudos to y'all. I mean, it, from the flow into the book fair to, you know, that you guys, that you knocked it out of the park, and it was amazing. And I think sometimes with grandparents, even a shorter time is good for all, and nothing but positives on it. I've just heard from people rave about that, and they're great job on that. That is so thankful.
Anything else? All right, we will move forward with the superintendent's items of interest.
I just have one thing on here, just I wanted to let everybody know where our ADM was because I certified that a few weeks ago. So, we are at 500 or we're at 531 students. I look back, we have more students now in our school corporation than we did in 2022, so we've grown the last two years, which is good. It's hard anymore for small school corporations, let alone large school corporations to grow. I can tell you that I've looked and saw some articles where Hamilton Southeastern lost over 400 students this year. Columbus lost over 200 students, so we're in a great spot right now with that. And we've actually gained another three students since county, so we've done well there.
Thank you. All right, report of superintendent, we'll start with item number one.
So, for this, this is, I received two bids. They were due today by noon. There was one bid for the old elementary school and one bid for the, the old football field. So, what I'd like to do is make a recommendation for the board to review the bids for both the old elementary school and the old football field.
This is something new. It's more workshop or something. All right, so this is for the property on Washington Street. So, is this, this is, I'm assuming, football field, the way this looks like it's labeled, but we'll see. To whom I may concern, my name is Beth Irwin, president of the By County Soccer Association. I have been involved in some way with By County Soccer since the organization started 24 years ago. The organization began with around 50 youth at one time and reached a membership of 350. We currently serve around 200 youth from multiple counties, including Warren, Fountain, Benton, and Tippit Canoe. I have lived here my entire life, graduating from Attica High School and returning here to raise a family. My interest is in the property located at 545 East Washington Street, the sports field. While I know this property is worth momentarily a lot more than what the soccer organization can officially offer, we would like to submit a bid for $5,000. With the property, we'd be able to expand soccer organization, allowing our older age groups to play on an official-sized field while expanding their knowledge and skills of the game. Additionally, this would allow us to host youth teams from out of our area, such as Benton Central 14U, Clinton 14U, and other teams we often travel to play. Bringing them to our field would not only benefit our program, but also brings benefits and business opportunities to the area while the parents are in town for the games. While this is my slash our main motivation for bidding on the property, we would ideally like to, at some point, if insurance would allow, to keep the facility open for the public walking and fitness activities, as we know this has been a nice addition to the community. Purchase would be made by cash slash check. If accepted, we would be willing to enter into a signed offer of purchase within seven days and close within 45 days as stated in the public notice. Sincerely, Beth Irwin, By County Soccer. That's the first one. All right. Here's the second one, and this is for the elementary school property. Dear Attica School Board, I, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing to express my sincere interest in purchasing the old Attica Elementary School. This building holds a special place in the heart of our community, and my goal is to bring new life into it, honoring its past while shaping a bright, purposeful future for the people of our town. As someone who's grown up here, worked here, and lived here, I've seen firsthand how deeply our town values connection, creativity, and shared spaces. My vision is to transform the school into a multi-use community hub, beginning with a dance studio that welcomes all ages and abilities. Dream Dance has been blessed to be a part of our community since 2003. On average, we enroll 175 to 225 students per season who greatly benefit from access to a larger rehearsal space. Beyond that, I see opportunities for local office spaces, a daycare center, summer camps, fitness classes, and even indoor storage units and more, all designed to serve the real practical needs of our residents while keeping this familiar building alive and bustling once again. This project isn't just about repurposing a building, it's about preserving a piece of our history, our story. The old classrooms and hallways where generations learned and grew can once again be filled with laughter, movement, and purpose. I believe this transformation can strengthen our town's sense of togetherness and pride, offering both creative and economic opportunity right here at home. I'm committed to approaching this project with care, respect, and collaboration. I welcome conversations with community members, local leaders, and other business owners to ensure that this space truly serves all of us. Taking into consideration the amount of probable repairs the building needs and the cost associated with remodeling, I would like to offer a bid of $25,000. This bid is for the school itself and excludes the football property. Thank you for considering my proposal. I know when I look at the numbers, my bid cannot compete with a large real estate developer or big business owner. I am someone who just loves our community and the very best of the people in it. I would be willing to agree to a reasonable extra stipulations about the building's use, resale, et cetera. It would be an honor to carry forward the legacy of Attica Elementary School, turning it to a place that continues to inspire growth, connection, and joys for year to come. With warm regards and a hopeful heart, Angie Slinker. I don't think anyone is here representing these, so I'm not sure I can really open it up for questions. So, the next step will be that the board will review these and discuss these in executive session, and then have further discussion at a public meeting on what the outcomes or action items from that might be. Any questions or other comments from the board? All right. Matt, do we need to take a view, a vote on reviewing those bids?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue the process of reviewing the bids for the old Attica Elementary School and Old Football Field? I'll make a motion. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number two.
Like to make a recommendation to approve the resolution to adopt the Attica Consolidated School Corporation 2026 budget.
Are there any questions on the 2026 budget? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2026 budget for the Attica Consolidated School Corporation? I'll make a motion. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number three.
Like to make a recommendation to approve the resolution to adopt the Attica Consolidated School Corporation Capital Projects Plan 2026.
Any questions on the capital projects plan? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Attica Consolidated School Corporation Capital Projects Plan for 2026? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number four.
Well, number four, we've discussed this before, but I just want to remind everybody in case it didn't hear. We purchased. We purchased a new school bus this school year, so we will not need to purchase one until school year 2027. So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the resolution to adopt the Attica Consolidated School Corporation Bus Replacement Plan for 2026.
Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the resolutions for anticipated transfer between the education fund and the operations fund for July 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, and January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. That amount will not exceed $660,000.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number six.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the Resolution of the Form 4 for Appropriations to Taxpayer.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution for the Form 4? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the 2026 budget resolution, giving permission for the superintendent to adjust appropriations from the requested budget amount to reflect the 1782 notice of amounts allocated.
Are there any questions about that? Can I get a motion for approval of the budget resolution, giving permission to the superintendent to adjust appropriations within the requested amount? I'll make a motion. I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number eight.
Before we go into eight, I'm just going to kind of go over where this amount came from, to be transparent to everybody here. So we have four negative funds currently totaling $70,872.35. Those negative amounts, one came from the overpayment for the SRO grant. That's an amount of $20,250. That was in the 2022-2023 school year. We had another amount that was not reimbursed out of Title I for the '23 school year, $14,679.21. We had another amount that was not reimbursed from our 3E grant. That amount was $35,508.90. That should have been reimbursed last November. It was not done. And then the last one is from a Title II grant that was from 2023 in an amount of $433.24. So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the transfer of $70,872.35 from the rainy day fund to the operations fund to pay for the four negative balances that were not reimbursed. This will bring us up to zero negative balances.
Are there any questions on that? Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number nine.
So right now, we don't have a steamer. It's been down for-
Years.
Years. I was going to say years, I didn't even know the exact amount, for years. And so we have money allocated that was not spent last school year. So Danielle did a good job of getting us three quotes for a new steamer. This is the lowest quote and one we think that will do the best job for us. This will allow the kitchen to make pasta and several other additional meals that we're not able to do currently. So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the quote for the new steamer. For the cafeteria, and I can tell you real fast, that amount is $17,205.58.
Are there any questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 10.
So we had a bid process for a project that we're doing for HVAC controls. We had some bids come in. One is for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and another one was for the electrical contract of this project. We took the low bid on the electric contract, which went to Anderson Electric for $117,943. We scrapped the low bid on the heating and cooling because there were numerous items that were not included that should have been, so we took the second lowest bid, which was $245,000. That is from Everheart Heating and Cooling. So I'd like to make a recommendation for these. This will be coming out of our bond money that we still have left over.
And when will this work take place?
So we will start doing this next month, November.
Are there any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the HVAC and electrical renovation contract?
I'll make a motion.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the corporation treasure to pay claims to the end of October 2025.
Any questions on that? Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 12.
12 will be, I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt the board policy handbook updated policies. This will be the second reading. The first reading would have been last month.
Are there any questions on the second reading? Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 13.
Number 13, I'd like to make a recommendation to review the board policy handbook updated policy, volume 37, number one. The majority of these, almost all actually are just revisions. Most of them are grammatical revisions. The only one, there are two new ones, but the one that I think that we can focus on tonight is artificial intelligence. And the only difference is, is that it says it should be aligned with the policies that we have now for student use and student conduct. So there's no other differences other than that.
Any questions? Can I get a motion for the first reading? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 14.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the October 27, 2025 personnel sheet.
Are there any questions on the personnel sheet? Can I get a motion to approve the personnel sheet? I'll make a motion. All second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any financial status?
So I had Ms. Powers pull our fund reports from today's date, as well as today's dates last year, to give everybody just a perspective of where we stand financially. Last year, in our education fund, we had right at $1.3 million. As of today, we have just over $1.7 million, so we have a $400,000 growth in that fund. In our operations fund, last year we had just under $24,000. Currently, we have just under $450,000. So we had a $400,000 growth in that as well. In our rainy day fund, last year, we had $1.98 million. As of today, we have just over $1.9 million. And obviously, a lot of that stuff that we talked about, the bus and things like that and curriculum have come out of that rainy day fund, so that's why that fund has went down a little bit.
What do you attribute to the large spike in the operations fund?
So I'd say some of that is the spike in the property tax that we've taken in with that $70,000.
And then the education fund, that would be primarily connected to enrollment, correct?